How are you?
Great. No changes tonight.
No changes. Perfect. Thank you.
Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. If you are a code enforcement officer or other individuals here that intend to give testimony this evening, I ask that you stand and be sworn in.
Do you swear affirm you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. The next area was a informational, but another great job for code on the code enforcement report. Thank you.
Yes.
Has anybody reviewed the minutes from the meeting on Tuesday, February 25th?
Chair, I have reviewed the minutes and provided some minor commentary to our clerk, and I move to approve with that minor commentary. It's just names. That's all.
Okay.
I second.
Roll call.
Board member Gallo.
Aye.
Board member Capra.
Aye.
Board member Owens.
Aye.
Board member Penkey.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
And Chair Gilday.
Aye.
All right.
We're moving on to our case for the night. Public hearings, new cases.
For the record, Chris Albon, Code Compliance Inspector with the City of Winter Springs. I have been sworn. I request his presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. The first item to be heard is case number 2025 CE 000039 for the property located at 147 Hayes Road for the violation of Winter Springs City Ordinance Section 20-413 Animals. Under Winter Springs City Ordinance Section 20-413 Animals, no one shall keep the following animals in R1, R1A, and R1AA residential zoned areas: horses, cows, pigs, chicken, geese, goats, or any other fowl or livestock other than household pets. Case summary: On January 6, 2025, I arrived at the complainant's property to conduct an inspection based on the citizen's complaint. It is from the neighboring property regarding chickens being kept at the property. While making contact with the property owner, I did hear that you could, the sound of chickens, roosters at the property. On January 6, 2025, a courtesy notice was sent to the property owner by USPS regular first-class mail. On January 23, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property, and again audibly detected the existence of chickens in the rear yard area of the reference property. On January 23, 2025, the notice of code violation was sent to the property owner by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. On January 27, 2025, notice of code violation was delivered to the property owner. On February 10, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the property and audibly detected that the chickens remained in the rear yard area of the property. On February 10, 2025, the notice of hearing was sent to the property owner by USPS certified mail, return receipt requested. On February 12, 2025, notice of hearing was delivered to the property owner. On March 5, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the property and found that the violation remained. This time, I was able to not only hear but see the chickens, hens and roosters in the rear yard area because there was a gap in section of the fence. So this is Exhibit 1 of the property located at 147 Hayes Road on March 5, 2025. That's the gap in the fence there. And closer look, that's where you have the hens and roosters in that chicken coop there. The last inspection was conducted on March 1, 2025, where again, I wasn't able to get photographs, but I did observe chickens such as hens, roosters, and what appeared to be ducks at the property. The property is zoned R1A. That concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions? There we go. So staff recommendation, let me back up. I recommend the Code Enforcement Board find the property in violation, issue an order requiring the violation be corrected, and the property brought into compliance. Honored before April 4, 2025, that gives 10 days, and consider it an imposition of a fine of up to $250 per day in the event the requirements of the order have not been met by the date set for compliance by the Code Enforcement Board. Now I conclude my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Albon?
Yes, Inspector, do you have any conversations with the owner at any time?
Yes. The property owner is here as well as along with the complainant. The property owner believed that she was permitted to have livestock chickens at the property because apparently she took some sort of course through Seminole County. But I informed her that even though you were able to take this course for chickens under Winter Springs City Ordinance, it doesn't allow chickens or fowl in a R1A zone residential district.
Thank you. Any questions?
When was? Thank you. When was the first contact or complaint made? The case summary states January 6.
Correct. It was back in January. So that'd be, correct, January 6 was the first, I guess, inspection where I found that chickens were being kept at the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? And you did say there's a respondent here?
Correct.
For the record, please step up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Martha Cortez Mendez, and my address is 147 Hayes Road.
Thank you. Tell us why, a little bit here, what you're misunderstanding or what's in question at this point as far as having chickens?
I don't have a misunderstanding. The only part is that a couple of my chickens are not sellable. I have three or four in the house as pets because they're not able to be outside. And I have two outside with the rooster. And actually finding someone to take them is a big deal because the ones that I keep inside as pets, they're not going to be able to, no one's going to take them. They're not going to take on the responsibility of taking care of them. And the rooster is, well, he's, I have names for all of them. They're my pets. You know, I love them. And Peck is a, I've tried to get someone to take him, and he is a protector. And if someone, most people won't take a protector like that, and they'll call them immediately. So I'm really not sure what my other options are. I've actually had a couple more roosters and did, was able to take them to a rescue because I decided to let them do their own thing. And so I did get rid of a lot of chickens. But I have come to the point where I have called and knocked on doors, and it's really difficult to actually find a home for these chickens. So that's where I've kind of like left off because it's not like I'm trying to keep them, you know, the ones that are outside. It's just finding someone to take them. It's very, very difficult right now. Because most people have way too many roosters or they've, you know, and that's where we're coming down to. So not really sure where else to go.
Any questions?
Have you gone to Animal Services?
I did, and they referred me to someone else, and they're completely full. And I've called multiple, I've called even out in Daytona Beach and, you know, in Volusia County. I've called Tampa. It's just really difficult to find someone to, you know, to rescue these animals. They're, you know, yeah, it's very difficult.
And how many are in total at this point?
Outside, I have two and the rooster. And then I have, I have four in the house, but they won't go outside.
Four in the house?
Yeah. But they've become like pets, like they don't go outside. And no one would take them with the care that they need.
What is, they fall under the same ordinance, Mr. Albon?
Correct. The ordinance, I mean, it. If we can go back here, it's, I mean, very to the point. Horses, cows, pigs, chickens, geese, or any other fowl, so even ducks.
Okay.
And it's owned R1A.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for the respondent?
Well, kind of a comment for the dais and then a follow-up comment for the respondent. It seems that this case was brought before us pretty quick and only being granted 10 additional days to come into compliance. Where normally we see cases go on for a couple of months, and then we give them 30 some odd days to come into compliance. Given that she has tried, I think we need to give her some time to come into compliance. And then the follow-up question for you, ma'am, is how much time do you think would be reasonable in order to continue your search to rehome these chickens?
I'd say at least 30 days because I, like I said, I've been knocking on doors and calling people for over a month. So I'm not really sure if I have to go like out of state or something like that. And if that was the case, then it would, you know, take at least 30 days. So that's where I don't really know. I couldn't give you like an idea because I really don't know where I'm going or what I'm doing at this point because it's really difficult to actually rehome chickens. They're not like dogs. It's very, very difficult.
Are your chickens producers?
Yeah, they are. And that was, that was the reasoning I took the class in Seminole County because I knew how crazy it was and the amount of money that we were going to be spending on, you know, eggs and things of that nature. And that's why, you know, why I got them. And they're all, they're all producers. They're, you know, all the ones that I have. Even the ones in the house, but the ones in the house have, you know, have issues. So, but yeah, they are.
I'm sure there are farms someplace in the state of Florida that have, you know, that raise chickens and the like where you might be able to give them, you know, to some farmer.
Right. And that's where I've come to, like, I've gone on Facebook and I have, you know, three or four different pages of, you know, like rehoming chickens and, you know, refuges and things like that. And I'm just really coming up short. And I've literally called probably all of the places in the state of Florida that actually have like, you know, rehoming for specific like birds. And I haven't been able to find anyone to take them.
Yeah. I'm not talking about rehoming. I'm saying, have you tried to contact a dairy farm where there are businesses to raise chickens and say, hey, I have two, three, four X number of chickens? What, can you take them off my hands?
No, I haven't reached out to, you know, to big farmers because I don't know if they would take them because they are home-bred, you know, fowl. They're not, they're, you know, I mean, I wouldn't even consider. Like, I understand where you're coming from. I was just thinking that they wouldn't want them because they're not, you know, the type of chickens that they usually have on a farm like that.
Yeah, but you don't know until you ask.
Right. Right.
Another question for clarification for your knowledge, officers. Are there other zoning districts within our city that do allow for chickens? Seeing a nod from Deputy Chief.
I wouldn't believe so, but that'd be a question for possibly zoning. In this case, we're just looking at residential, and it is not permitted in R1A, R1, R1AA. So perhaps agriculture. I'm not sure if Winter Springs has much of that, though.
They used to.
Yeah.
Here we are. Yeah, not sure on the agriculture. Any other questions down there? All right, ma'am, you can have a seat, please. Any discussion on this?
I think she's been trying to rehome. I think she needs to broaden her search a little bit, as pointed out by others on this board. I would suggest giving her a 30-day period rather than a 10-day period.
I don't see an issue with that, but we don't have, when we have a motion.
Did you?
Someone wants to make that as part of the motion, but before we get to that, is there any other?
Is the complainant here? I thought he said.
Yes. I'm sorry. We have a complaint. Would you like to testify or say anything? You're going to need to, did you, were you sworn in?
Right. I did not.
Okay.
You just raised your right hand. Do you swear affirm and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. Thanks.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Iben, 604 Bonita Road. I originally made this complaint here with Code Enforcement, January. This has been going on for a couple of years now, and we've had multiple roosters making noise. And we have tried to work with just removing the roosters and let them keep their chickens. We have no problem with that. It has not been done, and we have worked with the local police to try to have the rooster noise level reduced. There was an impression that there may be some sort of support animal where she has taken a class to get that, and that's why they are still there. And we couldn't work with the police to do that. So what we started doing was after hours at midnight, we would start reporting the noise levels, and the police would come out there and try to work with them on that. That didn't change anything. So then I called Code Enforcement to try to help solve this problem, and that was in January. So we're three more months into trying to get this solved. And it's the noise level that's the problem. It's not the chickens. It's the roosters. The distance between two of these buildings away from where we're at standing. That's the major complaint that I have and the neighbors around me. That's about where it comes from, yes.
Okay. Any questions? No, that was pretty clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I just want one clarification. We're talking about six chickens and one rooster. So the four in the house as well as the two outside and the rooster, correct?
And the rooster.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, I'll move, I'm to find that the photographs, testimony from the officer and the respondent are enough to show that the existence of these chickens in a residential neighborhood are creating a nuisance and are in violation of the city ordinance and that the respondent is in violation of Section 20-413 of the ordinance of the City of Winter Springs. I move the respondent be given until?
24 April.
April 24. Let's make it May 1, 2025. To correct this violation, to correct these violations, in the event the respondent fails to comply by this date, a fine in the amount of $25 per day shall be imposed per violation until compliance is reported to and verified by the City Code Enforcement.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I'd like to just have some discussion.
Okay.
I'm fine with the day. It's the amount of the fine that I'm questioning. And that's because, yes, the date that the Code Enforcement process started was 7 January, but per the testimony we heard, this has been going on for a couple of years. So, and the code's pretty clear. Chickens, roosters, whether they're inside or outside, can't be there. So I'd like to help. And I think by that, $25 is just not sufficient, in my opinion. So I'd be willing to listen to the rest of the board, what you think.
What do you suggest?
$100 a day.
I'd be amenable to that.
Any other discussion?
No, I agree.
You're, do I have a second on that with the change?
Yeah, I would be amenable to amend the motion to 100, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second with an amended amount. Roll call. Christian?
Board member Gallo.
Aye.
Board member Capra.
Aye.
Board member Owens.
Aye.
Board member Penkey.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
Chairperson Gilday.
Aye.
Do you understand what that is, what this entails? That all seven fowl need to be removed before May 1, 2025? In the event that they're not, each day thereafter, you'll begin to collect fines of up to $100 a day? Okay.
Okay. I guess my only question is with the ones that are not, no one's going to take them in my home, and I have them as pets because there's no one that's going to take, you know, crippled or whatever chickens. What, I don't know what.
I can't give you a solution what to do. That's why we're giving you the time to look. But short of moving, they'll have to be rehomed elsewhere. It's against the ordinance to have them in the home or outside of the home.
Okay. And the only thing that I'm confused about is that we were never approached by the police for noise ordinances at midnight. That's why I'm not really understanding where this is coming from. But, because I've never, I never had anyone knock on my door for noise ordinances or anything.
Let me interrupt you for one second. This hearing was based on a complaint that was recorded on January 6. And we've taken into consideration the events since January 6. So that's not going to be entered in and hasn't been into part of our decision as a board. So that's why, but we're trying to give you some leeway and go beyond the 15 days that was suggested and give you the May 1. So it's going to be up to you to find homes for them by May 1 or to move them out of there somewhere else. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to other business. You are free to go. If you folks had a chance to look at minutes, or not minutes, I'm sorry, the agenda for tonight prior to, we asked and we're going to receive some, so we have some training planned.
All right.
And are you intending for, before we adjourn, we're going to do the training? But I don't know that we need, are we going to direct anything?
Chief needs all the training he can get.
He could train the class, so I just, I don't want you to be angry with me for holding you.
No, no. I mean, I can gladly stick around if you guys so choose.
I don't believe we do.
Can I ask you a quick question? Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Sorry. The report that you give us is that, I know, I assume it's public record, so it can be shared?
Yeah.
Okay.
It becomes public record the minute I put it on that gen.
Well, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to verify.
Yeah, yeah, it's all information.
It's different when it's something that's public, but you have to know about it and look for it.
Right, right. And there's no personal information or anything.
Something that's being shared.
Statistical data that we publish.
But you'd be okay with sharing that?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And we give out, I've given out the link on the city website to it as well.
Oh, okay, good. We just have a lot of people that, I don't know, seem to always complain about
Sure.
Code enforcement, and I think the numbers speak pretty highly that you guys are working really hard at following up and how much it takes each one of these cases, you know, how many times you have to contact them. I mean, it's not as simple as knocking on a door and being like, hey, you know. So it might help to give out some of those numbers, but I just wanted to verify.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you run across anybody that needs, you know, other information that might not be on there, feel free to direct them to me.
Okay.
And I'll respond back to them with whatever they need.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thanks, Deputy Chief.
Also, is it possible for us to get a copy of these slides?
Yes, I, great timing. I have copies for everyone. Christian was nice enough to print them out.
Wait, I have a question before you leave, Chief.
I almost made it.
Debbie, you had mentioned that there's complaints on Code Enforcement. I'd like to pull the string on that. What do we, what complaints are we hearing?
They're just people that are saying that there's stuff in yards, cars parked, things like that, that nobody ever comes and does anything. I always remind them that it helps if somebody complains, actually files a complaint. Like, that your guys are really busy and that you don't just drive around the neighborhood all day looking for things. I mean, not that.
Not all day, but we do.
Right, but I'm just saying, I mean, the paperwork that follows up on all these things is a lot. So it's just, it's usually just, they feel like, I mean, in my opinion, it seems like everybody always thinks that not enough is being done. But if you don't see the numbers, I think it's easier to think that. But I think if you look at the numbers and if they were to understand how many steps go into each of these complaints, you know, and I mean, this one was 12. If you walk through each day, it was 12 different things that he had to do. And that probably doesn't count the time he had to take to research.
Right.
Titles and all, you know, and just writing it all up. So I just think education of the community is always important, especially if I feel like they don't really have a good grasp of what they're even complaining about because they don't really understand what Code, I mean, I'll be honest, I didn't know a whole lot about it before coming here. So I just think it's better to try to educate.
Sure.
You know, and get that information out there and let them see how much work goes into each one of these things. Because that's a lot. I mean, when I looked at those numbers.
Yeah.
I've fielded a few questions over the years, and I've kind of gotten a habit. My initial response in a polite way is, well, what, tell me what happened when you filed a complaint? And they're like, I did file a complaint. I'm like, well, who did? And I said, a lot of times that's, and I've walked them through the link and how to do it and whatnot. So it might, it's an easy way to kind of say, you know what, you got to push the button to get things started, so.
The conversation I've had with my community, members have reached out, and they don't understand that it is a complaint-based system. It's not a floating enforcement system. Because I've even had the statement of selective enforcement will know someone made a complaint against that neighbor. That's not selective, that it was, that was a complaint.
Yeah.
Unless you make the complaint, then there's no enforcement.
Well, actually, we kind of, so obviously, the complaints, depending on what they are, have some priority. But then, in the in-between time of complaints, we're proactive. So we will, we run throughout the year. We'll take our zones or our designated areas that we use at the police department and, you know, kind of, we're going to go out and do abandoned vehicles or junk vehicles, or we're going to do tall grass when summer hits is something we go out and try to do. But this, you know, all that's the stuff you guys don't see. You know, because they'll either mow the lawn or remove the car or get it registered, things like that. So it's just, you know, it depends on what we have going on, how busy everybody is. But we do do both constantly. And if they're driving to one house, they'll look at a complaint to do an inspection and obviously see something.
Yeah, that's happened a couple of times.
Yeah, right.
I think my comment was more for not like the things you see, like grass and cars. It's the noise complaints, you know, overnight parking and stuff like that.
Yeah, and things you can't see from the roadway, driving by, you know, backyards, stagnant pools, things like that. Those will typically come in on complaints. Those will typically come in on complaints, because driving down the road, you typically can't see a green pool, so.
Chief, as far as I understood, every law enforcement officer in the city, every police officer is a code enforcement officer, and they can, if they see something, at the very least, start, you know, give a notice.
Correct. Typically, they're not well-versed in the more complex cases. They can deal with some noise stuff, but typically, if they become somewhat complex, they get sent over to code compliance for follow-up, things like that. If you're parked in the street, they'll typically, you know, go through at night. The night shifts commonly will issue warnings to educate the residents, you know, that you can't park on this road or wheels left to the curb, things like that.
I just want to try to get you guys' support as much as you can. Because I think you guys work hard, and I just think there's a lot of not knowing what's going on in the numbers and that kind of thing, so.
No, I understand. And like I said, I'm always willing to talk to anybody, even if they, you know, feel free to send them my way. I do it several times a week and, you know, explain how the processes work and what we can do to resolve whatever issue any citizen may have.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Enjoy your night. And if you do want to stay, you're welcome, you know. See ya.
Oh, sorry. You did put one there, I didn't see it.
Sorry for bombarding you to start with.
You are all good.
Sorry about that, I just wanted to clarify, and I didn't know it was going to get a little bigger than that.
We are all good.
We have a couple of extra copies down here.
It's all good. Give those to the, anyone who wants them? Perfect, we'll save one for him. Excellent.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for catching.
Good evening, everyone. Amelia Olmer, I will be doing the code enforcement board training tonight. We have sort of a two-part training. First, a little bit about code enforcement and the process, kind of the law behind some of the decisions that you all are required to make. And then we have a little bit about sunshine, public records, ethics, just sort of things that are applicable to public boards generally. So, it shouldn't be too long, but feel free to stop me with questions or we can have questions at the end. I've got some slides for reference in the future, I'm hoping you can turn back to, and get started. So, we'll start with the code enforcement part. So, your authority as the code enforcement board comes from Florida statutes, chapter 162. A lot, not everything, but almost anything you could want to know about code enforcement is contained in the text of the statute, if you need some, you know, nighttime reading. So, it is the, you know, legislature's intent to promote, protect, and improve the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. So, every county and municipality is going to have some sort of code enforcement mechanism, either a code enforcement board, like you all, or a special magistrate, who is one individual person who hears and decides code enforcement violations. And you will hear codes and ordinances, which is as it's described in the statute, and that refers to the city's code of ordinances, the unified land development regulations, international property maintenance code, which is typically subsumed into the city code, and the Florida building code. Just a little bit about the local codes versus the Florida statutes. They're both laws, but they arise from different places. The Florida statutes codify state laws through the state legislative process, and then the local codes are codifying laws that only apply within the municipal boundaries through the city-level legislative process of the commission, who will bring brought code amendments as an ordinance, vote upon them, and then those amendments might be incorporated into the code. Local laws cannot conflict with state or federal laws. So, you know, they're usually about things like land development, rules for using public spaces, sometimes traffic control, that kind of thing. And it is your responsibility to enforce the local codes, not the statutes, except when statutes are assumed into the local code, like maybe an animal control ordinance, traffic codes, the Florida building code, that kind of thing. So, this is the general outline for the procedure of a code case. More details in section 162.06. But it's going to start with, as we just discussed, an investigation by a code officer based on a complaint or their own violation. They usually attempt to gain compliance for some amount of time, and then a notice of violation will be issued. More attempts to gain compliance. If compliance is still not met, they will issue a notice of hearing. Then the case will come before the board, will have an initial hearing and your order. After that, if the case is still not corrected, a compliance hearing and a final order. And then after that, you know, it can get into imposing fines, liens, and even potentially foreclosure as kind of a consequence of continued non-compliance, should it come to that. Usually, again, as the enforcement officers just discussed, a violation is either found by the code enforcement officer or reported by a third party. A relatively new development in law is that complaints cannot be anonymous. So, someone has to give, you know, their name and identifying information, or the code enforcement officer should not act on the complaint. And then the code board, and then another important thing to know is that a code board member cannot initiate the code enforcement process. So, if you all, you know, have a complaint about one of your neighbors, you'll have to tell the guy on the other side to file a complaint. But we can't start with the code enforcement board members. Let's see, if a violation, yeah.
If I can just remember real quick, I think a lot of people I've heard recently that they got, they now don't want to do the, they don't want to file the complaint because they don't want to attach their name to it.
I've heard that.
But I just reinforce to them that that's the only way to get it, I mean, taken care of. You can't complain about it if you're unwilling to file, you know, to file the complaint. But I've heard a lot of people who don't want to do it and attach their name to it.
Yeah, which does make sense, yeah.
And that's new, it's only in the last two years. Because up until then, we could take, we would have anonymous complaints.
Yeah, yeah, it does make sense, right? Again, in the past couple of years, it does have to be not anonymous. But yeah, I can definitely understand why, you know, people might not want to do that. So, let's see, after a violation is found, the first kind of official warning that the violator is going to receive is this notice of violation. That notice has to give a fair notice of what the violations are and provide a reasonable time to correct the violations and information on how they might be corrected. If the violations are not corrected by the date provided in that notice of violation, then the code officers can move forward with bringing a case before the board by issuing a notice of hearing and continuing with that process.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a definition for reasonable time, or is that left up to, is that?
Yeah, it's kind of left up to the officer, depending on the nature of the violation. They have some discretion. So, depending on the severity of the violation or, you know, how long it might take to fix it, that can be anything from 10 days to three months, just sort of depends.
Thank you.
Along those lines, a notice of violation. If some, a case was brought before us, and it's happened before, where it's a case where they did not pull a building permit.
Okay.
But we fully are aware that our permitting process is in 24 hours.
Right.
That's kind of where that reasonable fluff period gets enlarged is when we have to take into account those procedures and processes. But is that something that is mandated that we have to take into consideration?
There's nothing specifically that you have to take into consideration. You kind of just have to holistically consider the situation and based on, I think we'll get to that in a little bit. Also, there are some factors in the statute to consider when deciding what time might be reasonable to correct a violation based on.
Well, I guess the question should be phrased, is there exposure to us or the city? If we make a mandate like tonight, there was a suggestion of 10 days, what if they had to pull a permit? And it's not reasonable to pull a permit, but we agreed to the 10 days. Is there exposure for counterclaim from a respondent?
There's always the potential for some sort of appeal, but it would be unlikely, you know, like the permitting process, like you said, is not instant. So, I would definitely take that into consideration, but. No, you're all good. But yeah, there's no mandate that you have to ask, how is it going to take, you know, 30 days to issue a permit and then wait, you know, 30 days for compliance? It's probably best practice to give a little more time if you know something's going to take a while, but should be, should be okay. And you all, you know, as board members, would be insulated from the process anyways, so.
Is the appeal process in Winter Springs to eventually make, go to the city manager?
No.
Um, no.
What is the appeal process?
If somebody wants to appeal what the code board does, that ends up, that goes to the court.
Yeah, they'll have, they will need a verbatim record of their proceedings typically, which often people don't have. And then they have 30 days from the date the order is issued to, yeah, go to the court, the circuit court.
The only time the city manager gets involved is if they want to lower a fine that we've always, we've put in a fine, we've gone through, the fine's been recorded, it's, you know, it's a done deal. And now they want to try to make the fine, now they want to resolve it once and for all. They can go to the city manager and ask for reduction. You know, the city manager has the authority to reduce the amount of the lien. But otherwise, the appeals go to the circuit court.
Yeah, that is right. Yeah, and again, the notice of the violation will be the first thing that the code officer sends out, has to have a reasonable time to correct, although there are some exceptions to providing a reasonable time to correct the violation in the notice of violation. That would be for repeat violations, where the code board has already found someone in violation of the same code provision, violations that present a threat to the public health or safety, or violations that are irreparable or irreversible in nature. A violation that presents a threat to the public health and safety would have to be pretty extreme, like a stagnant pool full of alligators next to the daycare. Like, it would have to be like quite, quite extreme, because when you're taking the notice away, you're taking away someone's due process, which is, you know, of most importance in the public sphere. And then irreparable or irreversible in nature would also have to be something extreme. I mean, maybe, you know, didn't pull a demolition permit, but the house has already been torn down or something that they can't fix.
They cut down trees.
Yeah, right, cutting down a tree, yeah, exactly. Something that, well, there's nothing you can do about it now. No notices provided, because you can't correct it. And again, the board can find some, all, or a portion of the violations that are issued in the notice of violation, in compliance or out of compliance. The notice just has to state all of the code provisions that have been violated. So, if there's only one, they only need to state one. But if there are 10, they all have to be individually listed and provide a time to comply, which can be the same amount of time, and state correction, corrective actions which could be taken. This is the recent case law update, I think we were talking a little bit about last time, about having a $250 per day per violation fine. The statute only says that a fine of up to $250 per day can be imposed. So, for a long time, that would be, okay, we're going to do $250 per day, period, and without breaking out those individual violations. There's been some recent case law updates, case DJB Rentals versus the city of Key Largo, where someone had quite a few violations and said that that was a violation of their due process rights to not be able, provided with an opportunity to come into compliance for certain violations and not be charged for them. So, this is going to come into play when there are multiple violations.
Two questions, if I may.
Yes.
Keep on interrupting.
No, you're good.
First one was a business tax receipt. Isn't that, doesn't that process already have fine structure applied to it by the clerk? And are we to impose additional fines if that was brought before us?
I believe it does have a fine structure. This is just an example of the kinds of violations which, you know, which might arise, things which could be multiple violations. And I think, I think these were the violations from the case as well, just as an example.
And then the other question is, if we are presented with multiple violations in the same presentation, do the fines imposed have to be equal across the board? Or can we say one is $10 a day and the other's $100 a day?
Yeah, you can, you can vary it in that way. You can give any amount up to $250, as long as it is, you know, somewhat proportional in the board's discretion to the fine. So, yeah, one could be 10, one could be 100. They don't have to add up to equal 250, which has been an interesting consequence of the recent case law. It used to be, you know, the whole fines added together were 250, and now it is more thought of that, okay, well, the $250 is per violation per day. So, that could be $250 for all, you know, 10, 11 violations, which could add up significantly, but that is within the board's discretion.
Or it could be, I mean, ultimately, for example, it could end up if there's enough violations, could it be $5,000 a day?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, depending on the number of violations, it could be pretty extreme, yeah, absolutely.
One quick thing, if I remember correctly, and if we set something, we can lower it, but we cannot increase it, correct?
Yes.
So, if we set $250, or we set $100 a day, we can lower that when they, if they come back, but we cannot increase that.
Yeah, that is correct, yeah. At the, at your initial hearing, if you set $100 a day and then they come back and they are still not in compliance, but they've experienced a hardship or something, you can always lower that fine, but you wouldn't be able to increase it. That's correct.
Thank you.
Also, the dates don't have to be the same either.
Right.
Right, also, yeah, the compliance dates can be different. If one, you know, violation looks like it's going to be pretty easy, you can do 10 days. If another one looks like it might be a little onerous, do three months, whatever. Really, really, a lot of discretion with the compliance dates and the fines.
In other words, each violation has to be handled individually.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Each violation individually, all in the same notices and all in the same order, but kind of each a universe unto their own as far as the compliance dates and fine amounts, yeah. Just a little more information about that case, just if you wanted some more information about that specifically. But basically, they were arguing that having no mechanism to reduce the amount of the daily fine imposed, when the fine was for all of the violations as a whole, was a violation of due process under the Florida constitution. The court agreed, and that's why we split it up now, so that if someone had 10 violations and five of them came into compliance, they're not going to be charged for those, they'll only be charged for the remaining violations that aren't in compliance. So, again, in bold and underlined, our office and board attorneys across the board recommend imposing separate fines for each violation listed in that notice of violation, supporting each of them with evidence, which will be presented by the code enforcement officer, and then imposing a different date and, or a separate date and separate fine for each violation. Can be different or the same.
It's funny, because it's, they tried to get themselves less, like, held accountable, but they actually increased the amount of money that could now be charged.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? It's like they were trying to be like, well, I fixed this, this, and this. That's why I don't want to be held accountable for that, which they did. But now, they can be, you know what I'm saying? But now they can actually end up where their max was, whatever, 500, but now they can have 250 per, so it kind of, not backfired, but it changed it a lot.
It worked for that specific person, but for everyone else, it's really changed the amount that they can be charged.
It didn't really work for that specific person, if you read the case. It didn't really work for that specific person, if you read the case, because the appeals court threw it out.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, and I wouldn't be surprised if there will be some challenges to that in the future, although it's nothing that I'm aware of currently moving through the system, but of course, if anything changes, I will keep you all apprised. So that is the kind of standard situation. There are also some different kinds of cases that can present different notice and hearing requirements. A repeat violation, a violation of the same code provision by the same person within the past five years. If a violation is a repeat, the code officer in the first instance does not have to provide a reasonable time to correct, as soon as someone repeat violates, that compliance clock begins ticking. They can take the case straight to the code enforcement board, you can do a higher fine, five hundred dollars a day for a repeat violation, as opposed to the two hundred and fifty for a standard violation, and that fine will begin to run from the date the code officer first observed the violation, without any order of the board in the first instance finding someone in violation. Have a recurring violation, different than a repeat, this is, if a notice of violation is issued, and then the violation is corrected, but recurs before the date provided in that initial notice, the case can still be presented to the code board. I would say best practice, not necessarily for the board, but, you know, maybe for the department would be to wait until a recurrence occurs, recurs a couple of times, maybe three or more, but that is in their discretion as well. And then a serious threat, oh, this is under a separate section, 162.064, a violation which is a serious threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, or which is irreparable or irreversible in nature, doesn't need that notice, the officer just has to make a reasonable effort, again, reasonable at their discretion, and can immediately request a code hearing. And if the board does decide this is a serious threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, you can ask the city commission if the city wants to take remedial measures to fix the violation of its own accord, for, you know, overgrown brush with snakes in it, or something like that.
You don't have to go to the city commission for that, the city, the code board can authorize that.
I, yeah.
Yeah, the code board authorized, we don't, the city commission doesn't have, doesn't have to authorize that. If it's a, here, here's, here's the case, stagnant pool, no fence around it, children were able to get into it, pool's been, you know, and it's a hazard. Notice, you know, notice is given, and we're really concerned that somebody's going to get into, fall into that pool and get hurt, or there's flies or mosquitoes or whatever. At that point, if the code board finds that there's a danger to public health and safety, the code board can then say, in three days, the city has the right to turn around and do it, and we will then charge the homeowner.
Right, definitely, yeah, yeah, so the board can determine that the, the city has, you know, this is dangerous, and the city has the right to take remedial action. The city itself would have to determine whether they're going to take remedial action, but then if they do, also, right, it can be charged back to the homeowner, in addition to any fines for noncompliance, so that is something to look out for.
For the, for the serious threat violations, it says they can immediately bring it to the board, can they, or will they do a special, like, if we're not meeting for three more weeks?
Sure.
Are they gonna, would they, what's the word, convene us for, to hear that specifically, or would it wait the three weeks? Because then, to me, it's not that serious threat of a violation, if you can wait three weeks.
Right, I suppose that they could convene the board in a special meeting, probably they would wait, it's less of a immediately bringing something to the board, and more about not having to provide that initial notice, notice of violation, and go through the kind of initial rigmarole.
Okay.
Can you, one more question, recurring violation.
Sure.
How would that work? I'm trying to understand it.
Sure.
So the, I just don't see how that could work.
Yeah, it might be a little bit of an odd circumstance, but it would be, maybe if the notice of violation says you have to have something fixed by April first, and then the, maybe the hearing is going to be on May first, before April first, they correct, they fix it, maybe it was overgrowth or something, but then by the April first date for correction, it has recurred, the overgrowth is back, and they haven't done anything to fix it. Once this occurs a couple of times, you can bring it back before the board, even if it is corrected by the time of the, the board's hearing, because it has been allowed to begin and, and so many times.
Make it even, make it even simpler, okay? You have a car that you're parking on your front lawn, and they come and they tell you, you have to move the car, you have so much time, you move the car, two days later, you put the car back, two days after that, you put the car back again, and they've noticed it each time, that's a recurring violation. You're, is there violation, you're correcting it, you're violating again, you're violating again, that's, yeah, that, recurring violation.
Thank you. Then, let's see, we will get to the board hearing, just a couple of notes about the nature of the hearing in general, the board meetings are public, all testimony has to be given under oath, due process is, again, required throughout this process, code enforcement and beyond, always a focus of a public body. So the respondents have to be given a notice of the hearing, which would be sent to them or posted on their property, and a fair opportunity to be heard, they can speak if they want, they can present evidence, they could even present witnesses, that is required. What is not necessarily required is public comment, you can allow public comment if you would like to, but it is not mandatory at a code enforcement board meeting to allow the public to speak. Again, in the due process vein, the board has to make its decision based solely on the evidence of the, on the record, which would be anything presented by the code enforcement officer, or the respondent, or perhaps testimony from a witness, or member of the public. It's important to distinguish what is presented at the hearing and what you may have personally experienced driving past a property or something, that cannot come into your decision making, it just has to be based on what has happened here in this space. Evidence can be testimonials, documents, photographs, really any other medium, as long as it is relevant. And, yeah, it's, it's better to receive more testimony than not enough, so unless the respondent is really getting, talking about irrelevant things, or, you know, going beyond the scope of the violation, or really kind of going on, better to just let them talk, wouldn't want to cut them off, and then they say that their due process has been violated, because they weren't allowed to testify.
Another due process thing is language. If they have a, if they don't understand English, we have to provide interpretation service.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, if someone has a language barrier, it would be, who'd you to provide interpretation services, or if they bring an interpreter to, to let someone speak for them.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
That we have to base our decisions solely off of the information presented, but part of the reason why we're here is we bring in our personal knowledge and understanding of code and the community, and that, to me, is in conflict. And I'll give you an example, we had a gentleman come in because he had installed windows on his house without a permit. My background, I know that he darn well needed to have a permit, and that came into play in my consideration, is that against statute at that point, because if we're not, it's my personal understanding of enforcement of code, not necessarily what was presented by the code enforcement officer.
I suppose that you could use your, your personal knowledge, your, that you have just, you know, from existing, but when ruling on a violation, finding whether a violation exists or not, that has to be based solely on the evidence presented, and then you have a little bit more flexibility in determining a compliance date, or in determining the amount of a fine based on, you know, whether maybe someone should have known. But as far as, does the violation exist, or have they come into compliance, that definitely needs to be solely based on the record, rather than, you know, outside information you've heard from neighbors, or driving past yourself, something like that.
The fact that you know that you need a permit to do a window, the code officer tells us that, he says, the statute says that you have to have a permit, and that, you're basing it on that, not necessarily by your own knowledge that you can't have the permit.
Well, I guess in that case, it was actually the testimony from the respondent, he's a registered professional engineer, stating that he didn't know he needed to pull a permit. That, to me, was egregious.
Well.
So that came into play in my decision making.
So that's, yeah, we, yeah, you can't, you can't divorce yourself of what you, of what you know, I mean, but that, that's not what, that's not what found you, that's not what made you fine that he violated, that he violated the ordinance. He violated the ordinance because he didn't have a permit. You made it a little more egregious because you thought he should have known even better than, than most, but.
Or you thought he wasn't being truthful.
Right.
Yeah.
Probably the latter.
You're allowed to weigh people, you're allowed to weigh the truthfulness of a, of a witness.
Absolutely, yeah, and again, yeah.
I just think ignorance of the law, I mean, if police officer stops me for speeding, I can tell, I didn't know it was sixty miles an hour, but, you know, I still get it thickened.
Right, of course.
Absolutely, yeah.
You speed all the time, though.
Absolutely, yeah, their ignorance of the law, not an excuse, and if, you know, if, from your personal experience, it raises red flags in your head, it's hard to divorce that.
That's what was going through my mind on that case, on the window.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, let's see, you all.
Same example back then.
Um, you all can ask questions of the officer, the property owner, any witnesses, the code officers will provide a packet of evidence, which you all will review, that to take into consideration when making your decisions. And then at the end of the testimonial portion, you'll present a motion, the motion can find someone in violation of none, some, or all of the violations presented, it's your decision, the, you know, the staff will come to you because they believe they have found a violation, but if you all see the evidence and hear the testimony and find that they're not in violation of the code, that is up to you, you don't have to agree with staff, they only give recommendations, you don't have to follow them, as, you know, we've seen tonight, you can impose a longer date for compliance than staff has recommended, you could propose a shorter date if you thought, you don't really need thirty days, we're going to do ten, and of course, you can choose the fine at your discretion as well, anything up to that two hundred and fifty dollars for a first time standard violation.
Can you explain, or someone went, because this is the first time I've seen it, when Christian had up there, when we voted the yays and nays?
Oh, yeah.
What was the other one, abstain?
Abstain.
Just like, no comment, like, maybe I don't.
If you have a personal conflict or something, neighbor to that person maybe, or, I don't know what you would be allowed to, what would allow you to do that, but usually, is if there's a conflict of interest for you to be voting on why that person is here and what the fine and penalty would be?
My understanding was is that we are required to vote, either yea or nay, unless there's a financial interest involved.
That's correct, and if you're going to, if you are going to abstain, you need to specify that in advance, there's a form you have to fill out.
Correct.
And, yeah, you can't just say, well, I abstain because I don't want to vote.
Or if they are, like, in the condition, it's, my next door neighbor, and I can't make the complaint myself, and my other neighbor makes the complaint, unless I have a financial gain, what is the, the purpose of the abstain? I mean, I have to, I'd have to fill out a form, so in that form, there's, there's no location because he lives next door to me.
Right, yeah.
I have to have the connection of dots of.
That's correct.
So, and so if, if everybody, if everybody says yea, you're saying, if I were to say nay, that just means I don't agree with the judgment?
Means you don't agree with, it means you don't agree with the motion.
And what is that, how does that translate into the actual?
We've, we've had that situation here, if, if enough people, if I were to make a motion, and four of you don't agree with my motion, but I got a second, and it goes to a vote, if the nays outweigh the yays, then it doesn't pass, and we're back to the drawing board for another motion.
Right, yeah, and then, you know, like, with the city commission, if they're voting to pass an ordinance, then it would fail, maybe it doesn't pass, but here, we'll keep going until we find a compliance date, or move to table it, or find a non, find they are in compliance.
If a motion doesn't pass, we'll make another, we'll keep making motions.
Right.
Until we get something to pass.
So in that last case we had, with the chicken lady, Art could have said nay.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But instead, he said, how about?
Right, right.
That's the, why we have the discussion.
That's why we have the discussion, so, right, so, so instead of saying no, because you don't like the amount, let's talk about it, let's amend it, get us to all agree, the idea is for us to try to eventually come to consensus.
Okay.
I, I really think, if any of us make a motion, and there's question in your mind about the motion, that we ought to discuss it and talk about it, because I don't think, I don't think about the things that you all are thinking, and vice versa, so.
Right.
I think the more discussion we have amongst us, the better, it's, because we're trying to be fair as we can.
Absolutely, yeah.
Not that it has happened before, but in a condition like tonight, where we do not have a full dius, and it's a six-person dius, and it's a split decision, say we were arguing over.
Three-three?
Yeah.
Doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass, but if we come to an impasse, is there a motion to table till the next meeting?
It could be.
Yeah, you could move, if you can't come up with something that is going to pass, yeah, you can table until the next meeting, or.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a table, it would be, it would be a postponement. Table, table and kills the motion at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, or, yeah, or you could kill the motion and table the case.
If this is a public hearing, you would have to kill the motion anyway, because the, the public hearing would have to be heard by the person who's absent.
Well, if you, if you, if you, if there's a motion on the table, the, the table only lasts until a meeting is adjourned, once the meeting's adjourned, anything that is left on the table falls off. If you postpone to a date certain, then, that you can do, so you can say, with, with this case, let's say this chicken case, I, I moved, postponed this case to our next, to our, to our next regularly scheduled meeting, that just takes the, moves the whole case over to that meeting.
But what happens with the due process, are they allowed to rehear the case? Or does the case get into one of those motions of, or was it the double jeopardy or anything?
No, no, that's not, no, you, you, there was never, there was never a ruling on the case. It's not double jeopardy, it's a continuation of the case.
And they're guilty.
It's not double, double jeopardy.
See, I have a question, if he comes back, and we postponed, or tabled, whatever terminology reason, and he would vote, but he wasn't here to hear the case, would he just review, would he be required to review what we heard, so that he could then vote on it, or would he abstain in that, I mean, how does that work?
He would be required to review, and, and probably even a better idea would just be to postpone entirely until the next meeting, and then present the evidence again, there might be updates in that time, kind of just start from the beginning, yeah, absolutely.
Well, in that case, we'd have to bring everybody back, and we've done that in the past.
Yeah, and they'll need to have a new notice of hearing, won't need a new notice of violation, they're already aware of the violation, but will have to notice the hearing again, to give the respondent an opportunity to, to come back.
Can I ask you a question on, on that, because I'm trying to wrap my, my hands around, what, that would have to be extreme for us not to discuss and.
True, I'm thinking something that we're so divided that it's a three-three.
We had a case here a number of years ago, where a woman was running a B and B, a, an Airbnb out of her house, and it was very, it was very complex, there were attorneys here, there was a court reporter here.
I was on the, the board then.
And we postponed that case. We postponed it because we had to get more information. We postponed it because we had to get more information.
You know what? I'm wondering then if I came in onto the board to hear when it was postponed too, because I remember being there and-
We postponed to get more information, absolutely.
It got pretty heated, yep.
Yeah, it's very, very rare. We tend not to postpone, we tend not to table. We tend to, we want to come to resolution right here, right now.
I agree wholeheartedly. I'm just, that's the whole reason we're having the discussion with councils, the what-if, what-if we came to a theoretical impasse with three versus three, and we're sitting here until ten o'clock at night arguing the same points.
You won't. Three versus three, three versus three fails.
Yeah.
The motion fails.
But what he's saying is we don't have to sit here till ten, eleven, like nine.
No, no.
No.
Not much jury-
No.
Definitely other options, yeah.
Postpone it and do it again next time.
Absolutely.
And maybe we'll have an extra person who can break the tie.
Right, you could do, right, that's-
Thank you.
Why don't you just say that?
Now, that one was, the attorney was from, like, Tallahassee or somewhere.
Yeah, right. It was, and we don't have to wait a month or to the next meeting. We could call a different-
You can call a special meeting.
A little thing.
You can call a special meeting, right.
Sorry, the hijack.
Oh, no, all good. Let's see, okay. Yes, okay, and here we are again, back to the motions. If you find a violation in the motion, it'll have to have a compliance date and a fine. In determining the fine, there are three statutory factors to consider, which is the gravity of the violation, any actions that the respondent may have taken to try and correct the violation, and any previous violations that they have committed. These are the only factors to consider when determining the amount of the fine, but within this, it gives you kind of the leeway to, you know, weigh all of these and decide, should we give a low fine, a high fine, up to the two-hundred-and-fifty, in your discretion. The maximum fines are, again, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per day per violation for a standard first-time offense, five-hundred dollars per day violate, per violation for a repeat, which is the same person violating the same code section again, or up to five-thousand dollars per violation, but just as a flat rate for an irreparable, an irreparable or irreversible violation. That one, they can't come into compliance, so we'll just find them a flat rate of up to the five-thousand dollars.
Do you have an example of that?
Sure, they cut, we had, we had it here, where some guy came and cut down a bunch of trees.
Yeah.
We had a couple of years, a couple of years ago, some guy cut down a bunch of trees, and we tried, they were unable to measure the bead width of the tree, so they turned around and he said, "Well, you know, you cut down, it's five-thousand dollars." And those were the days before-
Were a tree?
No, it's flat.
It was a flat rate on that, but now, if you cut down more than one tree, theoretically, they could have said each tree was a separate violation. I mean, they could have, they didn't, they didn't.
Holy medical.
They could have, oh, yeah.
So, definitely don't cut down the trees without a permit. Could be very expensive. And then, the board will issue an order with the factual findings. We have Christian prepare those, and then they will be signed by the chairperson and mailed to the violator so they have a, an official copy of your decision. And if they still don't come into violation, we will get to the non-compliance hearing, which is the second hearing we'll have, also called a Massey hearing, from the case Massey v. Charlotte County, which is kind of the determination that that secondary hearing is required, because the violator has to have a second opportunity to contest the imposition of the fine. Yeah, right, exactly. The due process, again, key consideration here. You cannot use just an affidavit or of the code enforcement officer and impose a fine based on that. The respondent themselves has to be provided a second opportunity to come before you all and say, "I did come into compliance," or "I didn't for this reason, and you should lessen the fine," or something of that nature before the fine is finally imposed. There will be another notice of hearing issued for this as well. Not a new notice of violation, but a new notice of hearing will be required to be sent to the violator or posted on the property if they have not come into compliance. It will come back before the board. You all have more options. You can find that they did comply and no fine will be imposed. You can find that they have come into compliance by the date of the hearing, but did not comply by the date set for compliance, and so a fine will be imposed for the interim. Or you can find that they are still not in compliance, and a fine will begin to accrue from that original compliance date that was set. Again, your decision to decide whether someone has complied or not with any of the violations listed. The code officers will present their testimony and give their recommendation, but at the end of the day, the decision is yours. You have to determine, again, we're doing the breakdown from the recent case law, a fine for each violation. So, for each violation, you have to find, did they comply or not? And if not, should the fine be imposed? And how much is that fine going to be? Usually, it will be the same amount as in the original order, but it can be less depending on, you know, extenuating circumstances, if you so decide. And, that's pretty, pretty much that. Following that hearing, a final order will be issued imposing a fine. The motion will say something similar to what is on the slides. They have come into compliance and no fine is imposed. They did not come into compliance, and a fine is imposed from the date of initially ordered compliance until the violation is corrected to infinity, whenever that may be. Or the third kind of interim situation, the violation did not come into compliance by the date originally ordered, but has complied by the date of the hearing, and a fine can be imposed for that interim amount, however long it may be. The final order is going to include kind of, you know, a lot of the same things from the initial order, factual findings, the violation was or was not corrected, and then if it was not, sort of a legal imposition of a fine, and the fine will begin to accrue from that original compliance date. So, even if the compliance date was May first and the hearing's not until May fifteenth, that May first date set for compliance is when the fine is going to begin to accrue. And they continue to accrue until compliance is met, or until a judgment is rendered pursuant to Section 162.09, which could, you know, be a long time. So, it's really important to get those orders on the record so that the city can correct fines.
Is it also important in that final order, tell them that if there is a repeat violation within five years-
Yeah, definitely.
Right, because that has to go in as well.
Yeah.
We have to put them on notice, that if there's a repeat violation within five years, then the fine can go up to, up to five-hundred dollars per day.
Yeah, absolutely. The orders, yes, will also always include notice that a repeat violation could result in fines of up to five-hundred dollars per day, and they will also include usually a statement about contacting the code enforcement officer when they come into compliance, so that they can stop that clock and stop the fines from accruing.
Do we just assume that the violations have come into compliance?
No.
No, they're, they're, they're validated.
So, they tell us?
They reach out, and then the code enforcement officers go out.
But they don't tell us?
Only if, only if they don't come into compliance.
Yeah, right.
You can see that in the report, because that code cases, there's seventy-nine open, excuse me, seventy open cases, and they've initiated seventy-nine. So, you know, we're usually seeing anywhere from one to, I think the most that, since I've been here, was about twelve.
Yeah.
And usually, it's four to six.
Yeah.
So, these guys are, most people are coming into compliance, and they don't get involved, which is great.
Yeah, that's the best indicator, they're doing a great job.
Absolutely. That's what we like to see. And, let's see. So, if they still don't come into compliance, these fines can become liens upon the property, which is where things become really serious for the property owner.
Can I stop you on that one?
Yeah, for sure.
Because everything we do is, results in a lien, right? What other fines? Have you been on a case here where we've done anything?
No, no. Every, every fine, every fine eventually becomes a lien, because when, when there's not compliance and it gets filed, that automatically becomes a lien.
Yeah, once the, the final order is reported, then that does become a lien upon the property.
I was just hearing on your word, May. Fines May.
Well, if they pay it, I mean, if they, if there's an end date, right, and they have X fine, they're ten-thousand dollars of a fine. If they pay that ten-thousand dollars, it's no longer a lien on their property.
It'll be released.
Right?
Yeah, the lien would be, right, released in that circumstance.
Okay.
I mean-
The important thing to notice with these liens, these are not primary liens, these are secondary liens. Because if somebody has a mortgage, the mortgage becomes, takes the place of the, is the first lien holder. And then, we fall under the mortgage.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so, in a foreclosure action, if there's any surplus, the city will usually try to get that for their code enforcement liens to satisfy it. You know, it might not be a lot, but something. And, yeah, certified, the statute doesn't require that the order be recorded, although they typically are. And then, once they are, they do become a lien upon the property, not only on the property, but also any other real property or personal property owned by the violator.
Correct.
The liens are valid for twenty years, but they cannot be foreclosed against homestead property. So, you know, in a city with a lot of residential property, there is not always a satisfactory way to collect upon the liens, but, you know.
But, can you say that again? If they have a homestead?
If the property-
Yeah, a code enforcement lien can't be used to foreclose on, on a homesteaded property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right, but it-
But it's the banks foreclosing on it.
Then, yeah, they can foreclose upon it.
Okay, sorry.
And we can collect some surplus in the end there.
The thing you have to understand is, that when, when there's a lien on the property, the lien is not only on the property, it's on the violator. So, if the violator owns other property, you can go after their other property.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. And-
So, the moral, the moral of the story is to do your code violation early in your life, so you have twenty years to-
Exactly, yeah.
Right?
You want to stay in the homestead, and then, once that twenty years is over, it's gone.
Right, and you're safe.
Exactly.
I don't think so, that's what we're driving at.
You're probably right, that was probably-
Right, voluntary compliance is what I meant to say, is obtaining voluntary compliance before we even get to the code board process. And then, once the lien is imposed, there's a process for satisfying or, and releasing the lien. They can also, the violator can apply for a lien reduction, come back before you all and make a determination on whether to reduce that lien.
The lien reduction is only the city, it doesn't come to us.
Okay.
Are these liens recorded in a way that the respondent tries to sell the property, it is reported in the title?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
I just want to make sure that one is-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I've had some issues in other cities where people try to say that they had no idea there were code enforcement liens, and they bought this property, "Can you please reduce it?" And-
Yeah, no.
So, after twenty years, the lien goes away.
Yeah, after twenty years, any lien goes away. Liens can't, liens don't survive twenty years. But the problem with, with title searches, when banks short-sell these properties, when banks foreclose on them, they'll sell them, they'll sell them to people, and they don't bother to, you know, they don't care about title, they just-
Yeah, they don't dis-
Yeah, it's very, that's when they start coming in here, that's when they start coming to the commissioner, or they, they, they'd go now to the city manager and say, "I bought this property, and it's got this lien, and it's, liens, what can you do for me?" And what the city, what the city has tended to do is, if you are going to homestead the property, that was if you're going to live in the property, they'll cut it down, they'll win charge you ten percent of the lien. If you don't homestead the property, then, good luck. And we had that with Racetrack. There's Racetrack, you remember the Racetrack?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We had Racetrack up here on, at the end of four-nineteen.
Four-nineteen.
They had, when it was still a Hess station, there was all kinds of, I remember sitting on that case. We, we, we put a, we put a lien on the property. And the lien amassed and amassed, and Racetrack bought it, and ultimately, they came to the city to reduce it. They ended up paying well over, if I'm not mistaken, four-hundred thousand dollars in fines to get rid of that lien.
Yeah, wow.
Wow, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
Cannot up.
This is serious business.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, really serious. I mean, they could add up exorbitant amounts. Speaking of that, three months after filing the lien, the city can move forward with a foreclosure action, except for, again, not against homesteaded property. The aggrieved party, which would include the city, can appeal the final order of the code board to the circuit court. The, the circuit court doesn't have their own discretion to review in the first instance the case, but will be limited to the record created by the board, which is why we're specific in our orders, and, which is why, if the respondent wants to appeal, they're going to need a transcript of the proceedings. And this has to happen within thirty days of the execution of the order. So, just, you know, kind of a small, you know, timeframe within which someone has the opportunity to appeal the board's order before it is no longer appealable and is kind of set. And with the end of the appeal process, that is all I have on the code enforcement process. I've got a little bit about your duties and responsibilities as a public board generally. These are things that would apply to any board you would serve on, not only the code enforcement board, starting with some quasi-judicial procedures. There are generally two types of functions that a local board might engage in, quasi-legislative act, which would involve policymaking, or quasi-judicial act, which would involve the imposition of policy. Code enforcement would be one of these quasi-judicial matters, where we are taking the policy that has been set in the code by the commission and enforcing it against individuals. A quasi-judicial matter will be against one or a small group of people, as opposed to applying to the city as a whole. And it's important in these kinds of matters to always afford due process, observe the requirements of the law, and base decisions upon competent and substantial evidence. The first due process, which we've been, I've been really harping on all night, requires notice and an opportunity to be heard, so this is why we send the notice of violation, the notice of hearing, the notice of a compliance hearing, Massey hearing. It is why people, respondents are required to have the opportunity to testify and present evidence, and why they are required to have the opportunity to testify and present more evidence before a fine is imposed after an initial order. It's, again, just making sure everyone knows what's going on and has the chance to say their piece. Also important in due process is a prohibition on ex parte communications, which, so, you know, as members of the board, it would behoove you not to discuss cases with the respondents outside of the hearing. If you did, you would be required to disclose that, to avoid the appearance of impropriety from having ex parte communications. And in the same vein, you're required to be impartial decision makers, you know, approaching everything as, as fairly and unbiasedly as possible, and making decisions based on the evidence in front of you.
It's not only discuss it with the, with the respondent, you're not allowed to discuss it among ourselves.
Yeah, right, and that would present a separate issue of the sunshine law, which, which we also will be discussing. But, yeah, absolutely, definitely don't discuss it amongst yourselves, outside of the venue of the hearing. Yeah, absolutely. And then, again, observing the essential requirements of the law, this is just applying the correct law to the decision, so, you know, picking the city code and applying it to the evidence presented before you. The city has that initial burden of proof to prove that a violation does exist, or that compliance has not been achieved in a timely manner, and once they have met their burden, then you all have the determination to make for yourself. And then, again, competent and substantial evidence, always important for the city to, you know, present some sort of evidence, photographs, testimony, the more the merrier, upon which you all can base your decision. If something is appealed, the court is not going to reweigh the evidence. Um, if, uh, something is, uh, appealed, the court is not going to re-way the evidence, um, but they are going to, um, just to kind of decide if, uh, you all have, uh, complied with those essential requirements of the law, uh, which is why we contain everything in the record, have thorough orders, and incorporate the city's, um, PowerPoint presentations into the record, just to have a really sound evidentiary basis upon which your decisions are made. Ex parte communications, again, um, should avoid ex parte communications concerning the cases. Um, you can, uh, not knowingly initiate or consider ex parte communications. Um, if you've had an ex parte communication with the respondent or otherwise involving a case, um, you would need to disclose that, uh, at the beginning, uh, before we begin the proceedings. Um, and the substance of that ex parte communication will be placed on the record, so that, uh, kind of everything comes to light, and we know, uh, that you have had some sort of external communication. Um, disclose it to, uh, the clerk, if you get a written communication, maybe if someone sent you an email or something. Um, and then verbal communications can be disclosed at the meeting on the record.
Can you just give a quick definition of ex parte?
Sure, yeah, that would be any, uh, communication that you have had about a case, an email, a conversation, a text message, um, outside of, uh, this hearing, so, um, anything that someone sends to you or comes up to talk to you, um, about something, some code enforcement case they're dealing with, would technically be an ex parte communication, and, uh, the written emails or such can be sent to Christian, and then, uh, verbal communications can just be disclosed at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sort of in that vein, uh, government in the sunshine, um, so, this is, uh, section 286.011 Florida statutes. All meetings of any board or commission, including the code enforcement board, of any agency or authority of a local government, uh, which official acts are taken, which they are here, have to be open to the public, uh, at all times. Um, basically, every decision of the government has to be made, uh, in the sunshine, so that people have, uh, an opportunity to participate in the government and know what is going on. Um, better rephrased, probably, as any communication between two members of the same board on any matter which might reasonably come before it, have to be, uh, had at a public meeting, uh, where the public has reasonable notice, uh, and access to that meeting. Um, also, under the sunshine law, minutes of the meetings have to be taken. Um, and basically, the takeaway is that, uh, boards cannot, uh, engage in discussion about board matters outside of a duly noticed public meeting, so, um, as soon as this meeting is adjourned, uh, no verbal discussions, um, it also would include text messages or emails. Um, it doesn't mean that you can't talk to one another, of course, that is acceptable, but, uh, you can't talk to one another about code enforcement cases. Um, and this might also include, um, I don't, I've heard some discussion about, uh, going before the city council. Um, so if you wanted to discuss, uh, sort of like a unified front or presentation to the council, uh, to the commission, uh, that would have to be discussed in, uh, a public meeting as well. Um, and, uh, yeah, this includes, uh, texts, Facebook, Twitter, kind of all of it, everything. Uh, basically, if you want to talk about the code board, it has to be at, uh, a public meeting.
A lot of discussions on that, which were here, um, related to the city commissions, one of the comments of one of the commissioners, that all boards should go away.
Yeah, yeah, I recall.
So, our discussion was, I, I don't see how this board can go away, so-
Right.
If it ever ended up on the agenda, that, we discussed that we ought to go in front and s-
Yeah.
And make public import, that this board shouldn't go away. I don't think it's going to happen, but, uh-
Yeah.
But if it does, I think we should make comment on it.
Yeah.
For clarity, if we were to do that, we're allowed to do that, if we were to go in front of the commission and, as a, I mean, we would all be there, but individually go and speak about not getting rid of this board, would that be okay?
Yeah.
This is a public hearing, right?
You can come to any, um, commissioner meeting, and when you show up outside, they'll have a, uh, I think it's a table or a stand, where you'd have to get the blue papers, fill them out, and then you'd-
But because it's out, because it's a public hearing, that's fine.
Yeah, it's a public hearing, so that, that is fine, and you can show up in your individual capacity, or you can show up in your capacity as a code board member and, and talk about the code board. Um, the only thing is if you wanted some sort of like unified presentation, uh, or something like that, you'd have to discuss it and, and make it here.
There's a lot of minutes to spend on that.
But, yeah, absolutely, can, can come to a commission meeting, uh, and, and speak, for sure.
You can, you, we, any of us can come to a commission meeting and speak personally, as our own, anyways, I can stand up and say-
Right, I get that.
I feel, but I ca-, I can't, I can't come up and say, "For, I'm speaking for the code board," because I'm not speaking for the code board.
But you can stand up as a board member and vote enforcement.
The only way to speak for the code board is if the code board votes on something and delegates someone to go up and speak for it.
Yeah.
Or the chairman would go up and speak for it.
Thank you.
Perfect. Um, this is just a little bit more about, uh, email communications, again, uh, which is why, uh, Christian, if he sends out an email, or if I send an email, um, definitely don't reply all, uh, because that could be a sunshine law violation, as, you know, minute as it sounds. Um, sunshine law not only requires everything that you talk about, uh, related to the code board, to be in a public meeting, but it also requires that meeting to be public and for the public to have notice of it and have an opportunity to be heard. Uh, there is not required to be public comment at a code enforcement board meeting, uh, but the public does have to have an opportunity to be present, and at, uh, meetings of, uh, other governing bodies, such as the city commission, the public also has to be provided with an opportunity to provide comment. Um, the sunshine law also involves abstention from voting. Um, unless there is a conflict of interest, uh, you all are required to vote. Um, if there is a conflict of interest, you may abstain, uh, if that would, um, ensure, i- i- if it is required to have an unbiased and fair and impartial proceeding, um, which typically does involve, you know, perhaps some sort of financial interest, um, you are, may abstain from voting, uh, you, abstention will need to be noted on the record, um, but if there is no conflict of interest, you do have to vote, if you're here. Um, of course, if you're not here, you do not have to vote, but if you are, you do.
But he, I, so, let's go back for a second to the case that you had, if, if, if I'm talking about my neighbor. My neighbor, if my neighbor's complaining, I can always cup, I, I, I think you can, you can always abstain at that point by claiming you don't want any perception of bias. Because it's your neighbor, theoretically, you could be biased, so.
Yeah, and, or, I mean, if it is your neighbor, but you still feel that you can be impartial and unbiased, then, then you can-
Then vote.
Continue to vote.
I did that already, so.
Um, we've got a couple just do's and don'ts for the sunshine law. Um, if we have a recess, don't discuss matters during the recess or before or after the meeting. Um, as soon as the gavel strikes, that's it. Um, whispering, uh, talking about the board in social settings or on social media. Um, just recommend, definitely, just don't talk about the code enforcement board outside of the code enforcement meeting. Um, and then, I, you know, it doesn't seem serious, but it could be. Um, knowing violations of the sunshine law can result in misdemeanor charges, uh, they could result in removal from office, fines of up to $500, um, possibly attorney's fees, which would be a fine of probably a lot more than $500. Um, and then any action that is taken at a meeting where a sunshine law violation occurs is void, um, which especially for code enforcement could be onerous, because, you know, would require re-noticing, bringing the case back up again, so, just kind of important to keep in the back of the mind of, you know, separating the code from other discussions. Public records.
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
When you, when she's talking about separating the code from other things, my issue is with this, is separating codes from emotions. So like, I wanted, I wanted to help that lady with the chickens.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I know tons of people out in the country that would take those chickens. Now, is she really not trying that hard, you know, because they would take them?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and, right, and it is, uh, it is something to consider, again, uh, when you're, you know, deciding, uh, not whether a violation exists, but maybe how much time to give for compliance.
Right.
Um, the statute does allow you to consider the gravity of the violation, and, um, you know, I mean, we're all people, so you can, uh, kind of take that into consideration when determining, you know, maybe how much of a fine to impose, or-
And that's, I mean, that's just, those are her pets, those are like her cats and dogs. I just felt sorry for her, that's all.
Yeah, very understandable, I mean, you know, we're, we're people, and that's why we're here, to try and help, so. Um, let's see, the public records too, um, related to the sunshine law, uh, public records law. If you get through chapter 162 on code enforcement and still aren't asleep tonight, um, you can go to 119, that is public records. Um, all municipal records are open for public inspection and copying, um, by anyone, anytime, for any reason. Of course, there are some exceptions, um, but for the most part, a public record is anything. It's, it's a document, a letter, a book, a photograph, sound recordings, the recording of this meeting tonight, um, in any form, uh, connected with the official business of the agency, so, um, that'll be the recording of the meeting, the agendas, the evidence presented by the code enforcement officers, my presentation, um, anything that is connected with official city business is a public record. So, uh, anything connected with the code enforcement board is a public record, um, which is why, uh, it can be important to, you know, just keep that in mind when sending an email or a text about the code enforcement board, um, or, uh, anything that isn't just, you know, a quick phone call, um, could be a public record. Um, there is no requirement that, uh, public records requests be in writing, so anyone can make one in writing or verbally at any time, and, uh, the city will have an obligation on our end to produce that public record. Um, records have to be kept, so, uh, there are different retention standards for all of these documents, uh, to be kept. And, yeah, that, that's really all I had on public records. Uh, probably won't, you know, come up a lot for you all specifically, but it's just good to remember that whenever you're talking about something about the code enforcement board communicating in any, uh, written or, uh, electronic or documentary form, that is a public record, and someone could look at it if they wanted to.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
I've heard asked at other municipalities.
Yeah.
And that is, um, we all have a tendency to write down and jot down our own notes,
Mm-hmm.
and a public's records request, those notes are not surrenderable, it's just the minutes? Or do we need to surrender our handwritten notes?
No, your, that is a great question, um, your hand, uh, public record is, um, anything that, uh, formalizes and memorializes, uh, agency action or, uh, decision-making or other agency business. Um, but your personal notes, um, as long as you're using them just to remember things or for your own edification, are yours and are not a public record. Um, now, it can get a little more complicated if you are using your notes and sharing them with other people, um, or, uh, you take your notes and formalize them in some way, uh, by writing them down in an email and sending it to the clerk's office or something, but if it's just your notes on, on your copy of the agenda or on a piece of paper, that, those are just yours.
It's work product.
Yeah, uh, it's, yeah, and, um, you know, my, my notes, um, you know, if I take a note, that's mine until I use it for something that is official city business, then, then it becomes a public record. Uh, I've got a little bit about the code of ethics, if you wanted another statute, this is chapter 112. Um, you all are public officers, uh, as appointed officials, um, which comes with some, uh, burdens by virtue of the position you hold. Um, you cannot solicit anything of value, uh, for, uh, votes or actions, so, you know, if she says she'll, uh, someone is going to give you money so that you make their code enforcement violation go away, not acceptable, um, cannot do business with your own agency, um, so, uh, you cannot rent your property to the city. Um, you cannot, uh, use your position to, in your, uh, in your favor, a special privilege or benefit. Um, so can't use, uh, your position on the code enforcement board to make sure the officers look the other way. If your weeds are too tall, um, cannot have, uh, a conflicting employment or contractual relationship to the city. Um, no misusing, uh, information that might be privileged by virtue of your position, which, um, you know, again, a lot of information has to be public, so it might be a more niche circumstance. Um, uh, no nepotism, uh, no importing your, your friends or relatives, uh, to the code enforcement board in your stead. Um, and then, I suppose, probably the, the most important, uh, is no voting on any measure which might, uh, inure to your, uh, private gain or your private loss. Um, so if, uh, your property, uh, had been the subject of a code enforcement violation or the property of a business that you own or are a manager of, um, was subject to a code enforcement violation, uh, you would not be able to vote on that matter, because, uh, it could result in either your financial gain or financial loss. Um, so basically, you know, the classic, um, classic ethics, uh, cannot use this position for, uh, your benefit or to harm others who you might wish ill upon. Um, also, uh, you know, important, um, like with the sunshine law, it can result in civil or criminal penalties, but even more extreme than the sunshine law violations, uh, this could, uh, involve removal from office, it could involve censure and a civil penalty of even up to $10,000. Voting conflicts, probably the most common, uh, ethical consideration that will be presented to you as members of the board. Um, again, cannot vote in a capacity which would inure to your private gain or loss. Uh, this is basically an economic benefit or harm. Um, uh, if, uh, a vote is taken, um, let's see, and you are abstaining, uh, you have to disclose, uh, that you are abstaining and the reason for your abstention, which will be incorporated into the record of the proceeding. Um, and, uh, if, if you might even have a voting conflict, uh, you should not, only not vote, but also not participate in the discussion around that matter.
Send yourself in the room.
Right, yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, step out of the room might, might even be a good idea, definitely, um, definitely don't say anything. Um, this is, uh, kind of, uh, a separate, uh, a little bit related, uh, intellectually, but separate legally from, uh, the procedural due process and impartial decision-making standards. Um, those, uh, were under procedural due process, you should not vote if you think you might be biased, but under the code of ethics, you should not vote, uh, if you will receive an economic benefit or some sort of economic harm from your vote. And with that, that is all I have, um, for you all, but happy to take any questions or engage in further discussion. Um, I hope that the presentation can serve, uh, sort of, a quick way if you have questions, but if not, I am always available as well.
Are you going to email this to us as well?
Yeah, I can definitely, uh, I will email you copies, uh, I, I will send a PDF to Christian, and then he can, uh, forward it out to everyone in the, in the typical fashion.
And then, uh, I, I do want to go back for a couple-
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess, some clarity on the recurring motions.
Let's see, sure, yes.
I was kind of glancing at the cards that we have, and I'm just wondering, um, first and foremost, I guess, as far as, for the language, would we fit that into a, uh, a non-compliance case, I'm trying to find the card that I looked at, um, a compliance case, as if they, um, since they were going in and out of compliance? Or is that, is there additional verbiage that the board needs to be made aware of, in case we, is that something we want to add?
Yeah, for the, um, for the recurring violation, uh, mostly just a note to, um, to keep in mind that the notice is not, uh, the notice requirements are not as strict, but as far as making a motion, um, I'd probably just do that as, uh, sort of, just the new cases, an initial motion, um, you know, finding someone in violation and imposing a final- you know, finding someone in violation and imposing a final date for compliance, and then a fine. The recurrence is more noting that if someone keeps offending, the Code Board can, can bring, or the Code Enforcement Officer can bring the matter before the Code Board without necessarily complying with, or providing additional notice of the violations.
I'm just looking, looking at it from that, like, the cat and mouse perspective, where we're going after them, they mow the weeds.
Yeah.
They come back, and every time we get to them, they're in compliance. So I wanted to be able to, I mean, how do we levy the fine? Or what's the proper way on levying a fine? If they're in compliance, you're telling them the next time they're out of compliance? Or just that we're going to bring them back? That's what I'm...
Yeah, if someone has, is in this sort of recurring situation, and they are at the hearing and they have complied by the date of the hearing, you can always find that they are not in violation, but that they were in violation. Not impose a fine, but then you have that order sort of on the books to maybe move forward with a repeat violation in the future, in which case you can kind of go after someone more instantly, and the fine will begin to impose at the date of the repeat without going through the notice and hearing process first.
So we can't have them with the flat $5,000?
Only if they cut down the tree.
Yeah. Well, that was going to be my comment, because you brought up the cards. I just, I remember at one point, we did have that instantaneous or the egregious finding as one of the items on the card, but that has, I don't find it on here anymore.
It's there.
Is it?
Yeah. If you look at, under, under new cases, okay, go down. "If the code inspector has reason to believe a violation or the condition causing the violation presents a serious threat to the public, health, safety, welfare of the violation is irreparable or irreversible, in nature you may add, further the violation constitutes a serious threat for the public." It's page 1 of 4, in the middle of the page. It's that italic indentist piece.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, perfect.
It doesn't say the amount, though.
No, they don't say the amount.
Well, not all of them should. It's, they're all unique. Thank you so much for doing this.
Absolutely. Thank you all. I really appreciate it. And, again, I have my information, so let me know if there's anything I can help out with.
Appreciate it. Has, does anyone have any other matters of business or questions?
I have one thing.
Please.
Christian, the last, the ordinance I have is from 1993. Is that, is that the current one that we're using?
That established the Code Board, you mean?
Yeah, okay. Just making sure I'm not behind the times.
And while, what is the current edition that we are enforcing, the IPMC, or property maintenance code?
So that's the 20, yeah, the 2024 version, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did recently, was it last year, adopt, adopt that updated version of the IPMC.
Thanks for sticking around.
All right.
Thank you all.
Anything else?
I guess now we're all on the, on the new one? Because at one point, they were still referencing the old one. Are we now all on the new one?
The new IPMC, yeah.
Just the new one, okay.
Anything else? All right. This regular code enforcement meeting has been adjourned.